It's four fifty-nine, we're not at start. Well, I gotta wait one minute. Call tonight's work session to order for November the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Happy Veterans Day, everybody. We first have on our work session scheduled the financial audit presentation given by Green and Fannie Colley for our fiscal year ending June thirtieth of twenty-three. So who's going to present that?
Hello, I'm Ken Meadows with Green and Fannie Colley. It was our pleasure to serve as the auditor again this year for fiscal year twenty-three. We just finished that audit a month or so ago. So anyway, we're making our presentation regarding that audit. Y'all should have hopefully the handout here that basically will, I'll just run through that will basically kind of summarize the financial results, and I've got it up there as well. So you'll see those. And so if y'all have got any questions as I go through, please ask me. As y'all go through the financial statements, y'all have got those as well. If you've got any questions on the financial statements, feel free to ask me, email me, call me, whatever you want to do on that, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can. So the first thing you kind of get to in the financial statements is the opinion, and you'll see it kind of outlines who's responsible for what. So that's a good reminder that the financial statements are the city's responsibility, and the internal controls are the city's responsibility, and also the underlying accounting records are the city's responsibility. Our responsibility is to do an audit to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are materially correct. So it's reasonable assurance, it's not absolute assurance, and then there's the concept of materiality. We don't look at every transaction. We may look at some of the larger ones, we may do a sampling of transactions, we may do some analytical reviews. And then it's also not a forensic audit. A lot of times when you hear audit, people think, oh, you're here to find fraud and all that. That's not the purpose of this audit, it's really a financial statement audit. So, and then finally, we issued an unmodified opinion, so no modifications to the opinion were necessary. So that's the best opinion you can get, that's the one most people usually get. So next, we'll kind of look at the general fund. The general fund for fiscal year twenty-three, you'll see revenues and other financing sources exceeded expenditures by about three point seven million dollars, and that increased the fund balance to thirteen point seven million dollars. Of that thirteen point seven million dollars, you've assigned three point two million dollars for future capital outlay. So y'all had budgeted basically in fiscal year twenty-four to use three point two million dollars of that thirteen point seven million dollars. And that left an unassigned fund balance in the general fund of about ten million dollars. Also, just, you know, kind of correspondent to that unrestricted cash was about thirteen point seven million dollars at June thirtieth, twenty-three. So kind of put that in perspective, we'll go to the next slide, and you'll see the that unassigned fund balance of up ten million dollars, that was an increase of two and a half million dollars from the prior year. So the unassigned portion increased about two and a half million dollars, and that represents about fifty-two percent of actual expenditures and about forty-seven percent of budgeted expenditures. So the GFOA, the Governmental Financial Officers Association, recommends a minimum of two months' worth of fund balance in the general fund. That's a minimum. We usually recommend at least three for a smaller entity, smaller city. So y'all are well above that, so that's good. So I think y'all have got a healthy fund balance in the general fund at June thirtieth, twenty-three. And just to remind you, you know, you want to have a fund balance, a healthy fund balance just because of the timing of cash flows. You know, your, the monies that you receive, especially from property taxes, come in at the beginning of the calendar year. June thirtieth hits, you've still got six more months of operations to fund before your property taxes start coming in. Also, if you've got grants, a lot of times those are reimbursement type grants, so you've got to spend the money upfront, and then you get reimbursed for those. So, and then also, if you've got savings for future spending planned, and then also emergencies, it's always nice to have a cushion for emergencies. So you want to have a healthy fund balance, which you all have, so that's, that's good. The general fund revenues and transfers in this year, you'll see the general fund revenues were about seventeen million dollars, a little bit more than that. You'll see you've got a nice mix of revenues, most of that being licenses, permits, and fees being about five point six million dollars. Local option sales taxes were about four million dollars. Property taxes generated a little bit over three point three, three point three million, and then franchise fees were about two and a half million dollars. And that's a slight increase overall in revenues from the prior year, fiscal year twenty-two, of about four hundred thousand dollars. And that was mainly due to higher property taxes, about four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, and local option sales taxes of about four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Offsetting those were a decrease in licenses, permits, and fees of about four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars year in the year, of fiscal year twenty-three. So compared to budget, y'all came in right at budget, about thirteen thousand dollars over budget, so revenues came in higher than budgeted, but y'all were right at that. And then you also, year in fiscal year twenty-three, transferred in five point two million dollars into the general fund. And about five million of that was the ARPA funds, that were received in the ARPA fund and then transferred over to the general fund year in the fiscal year. Expenditures for the year were eighteen point nine million dollars. You'll see there that most of it, public safety was about eight point two million dollars. Public works is about three point four million dollars. General government accounted for about three point one million dollars in expenditures, had about a million and a half in capital outlay. Recreation and tourism and debt service both took about one point one million dollars each, and then judicial services were about half a million dollars. So compared to the prior year, that's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase from the prior year. Most of that was just general government, increased about half a million dollars. Public safety increased about about three hundred thousand dollars, and then offsetting those increases was a decrease in public works of about six hundred thousand dollars. Compared to budget, y'all are about three point nine million dollars under budget, about seventeen percent under budget, mainly due to the general government being under budget by two point four million dollars. Public safety was under budget by about seven hundred thousand, and then public works was under budget by about half a million dollars. So, so that's a real quick overview of the general fund. You'll see that the other funds there were, Community Development Fund had a fund balance of a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. That basically remained the same from the prior year. All of that's committed. Revenues in that fund were three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars as well as expenditures. So most of that were grants that you received that you expended in the same year. So most of that three hundred and forty-seven, if not all of it, was grants and then related expenditures. The TIF fund had an increase in fund balance of forty-four thousand dollars to a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Revenues there were two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, and then expenditures were two hundred and eight thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-three. Moving on to the next slide, you'll see Hospitality Tax Fund had three point two million dollars fund balance at year end, and that kind of breaks down into various restricted buckets. You'll see half a million dollars is restricted for capital projects. That basically represents unspent bond proceeds, so you issued a bond for, to fund various capital projects, and you still have about half a million dollars remaining in that at June thirtieth, twenty-three. You also had about four hundred thousand dollars restricted for debt service, and then two point three million dollars was restricted for recreation and tourism-related expenditures. So that, overall, the fund balance increased about eight hundred thousand dollars for the year for the Hospitality Tax Fund, with revenues coming in at three point four million dollars and expenditures being two point six million dollars. You'll see revenues increased about three hundred thousand dollars from the prior year, and then the expenditures, you'll see most of that, as you would expect, be recreation and tourism expenditures, some capital outlay of four hundred thousand dollars, and then some debt service of about eight hundred thousand dollars. Other major governmental funds, the ARPA fund, that's the one where you received five million dollars in ARPA funding in twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-three, and then you transferred it to the general fund. And then I would say the general fund had some expenditures where it expended some of this money, some of it, a lot of it remained at gen, you know, that's basically what contributed to the, a big portion to the increase in the general fund in fiscal year twenty-three. So at the June thirtieth, twenty-three, there was no fund balance. You did have about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in unearned revenues at June thirtieth of twenty-three in this fund. And then you've got several other non-major special revenue funds. The only one that's really significant there was the Impact Fees Fund, and that generated about five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars and had a fund balance of one and a half million dollars at June thirtieth, twenty-three. So that's most of the governmental funds. You also see you'll have a proprietary fund, the Stormwater Fund, and that had a net position, which basically like your equity position, of two point two million dollars, and that's an increase of four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Of that two point two million dollars, most of that is invested in capital assets, two point one million dollars. You've got a little bit restricted for debt service, twenty-eight thousand dollars, and that leaves an unrestricted net position of fifty-seven thousand dollars. And that's actually an improvement from the prior year when you only had an unrestricted net position of twenty-three thousand dollars. So you've also got unrestricted cash in that fund of sixty-seven thousand dollars at June thirtieth, twenty-three. So Stormwater Fund in twenty-three had revenues of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, had operating expenses of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, including a large chunk of depreciation, two hundred and three thousand dollars, and that resulted in operating income of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars compared to a loss in the prior year of three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So, so compared to the prior year, the Stormwater Fund did very well from an operating standpoint. You also had some non-operating expenses of about sixteen thousand dollars, and then you also benefited this year from infrastructure contributions of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars as well in that fund. So that's a real quick overview of the funds, kind of give you an idea of the net, statement of net position, which kind of your balance sheet for the city, where you combine all the funds and put the capital assets on the, on the books and the debt and all that. You had, you had about fifty-nine million dollars' worth of assets at the end of the year. Cash and investments made up about twenty million of that, and then you'll see capital assets, net of accumulated depreciation, were about thirty-six, thirty-seven million dollars. Offsetting those assets are liabilities of about thirty-eight million dollars. Accounts payable and accrued expenses were about two point eight million dollars. You had long-term obligations of seventeen point two million dollars, that's mainly debt. And then you had your OPEB accounts, y'all have an other post-employment benefit plan, and the actuarial liability at June thirtieth, twenty-three for that plan was five point eight million dollars. And then you also participate in the state's pension plans, and those have a rather large deficit, an unfunded lot position there, which is liability. And so under GASB report accounting, they allocate that liability at the state to all the participants in the plan and have the participants record their share of the liability on their books, and that was about twelve point two million dollars. So that makes that, the thing that makes that a little bit different is technically that's not a true liability of the city. Y'all will never have to pay that twelve point two million dollars. What you do pay is an increased amount, as everyone else does that participates in these pension plans, to make up the unfunded liability. So it's more of an accounting thing, it's not something that really impacts y'all from, that y'all are going to have to pay the twelve point two million dollars, but y'all do pay for it, you know, every time the employees get paid, you have to pay a little bit more. Those rates have gone up over the last several years. I think they're at the highest rate that they can be yet right now without the state changing anything. So anyway, your net position there, which would like be the equity if you're a business, was about twenty-one million dollars at June thirtieth, twenty-three. So that's a statement of net position, kind of hit on a couple of other things here. Capital assets, as I mentioned, were about thirty-seven million dollars at June thirtieth, twenty-three. That's a slight increase from the prior year. You'll see that you had increases of about two point nine million dollars in fiscal year twenty-three. The West End Hall renovation started in twenty-three, and that was about half a million dollars' worth of construction cost. Equipment and vehicles that were acquired year in the fiscal year were about nine hundred thousand dollars. You also had infrastructure of one point one million dollars. A good chunk of that was donated. And then you also recorded the intangible right to use related to the lease of the vehicles and equipment of about two hundred thousand dollars. So offsetting those two point nine million dollars in additions were depreciation expense of two and a half million dollars. So that gets back to your increase of about four hundred thousand dollars. Then we'll also look at debt. Total debt outstanding at June thirtieth, twenty-three was a sixteen point seven million dollars. That's a decrease of one point six million dollars from the prior year balance. Most of that just due to principal payments. You did have some new borrowings in the fiscal year, and that was really related to the additional vehicle leases that you entered into. So that was liabilities associated with those, that lease, that's about two hundred thousand dollars. And like I mentioned, you made about one point eight million dollars in principal payments year in the year. So that's a quick overview of the financial statements. Next, the compliance. You'll see that if you look in the back of the financial statements, you'll see there's some material weakness there related to performing bank reconciliations, and then there's also a compliance finding related to court fines. Similar to last year when we came in, the bank reconciliations hadn't been done on a timely basis, and so that's basically what this material weakness relates to, is that we came in, the, we were audited June thirtieth, twenty-three. We came in basically in January, December, January timeframe, and the bank reconciliations hadn't been completed, completely done. I think the city engaged an external accountant, accounting firm. They were working on it, but they did not complete it. So I think that after a few more months, y'all hired, I think it was Donna Perry, who was also an external accountant, and she came in and completed it late spring, I want to say, early summer, and so we were able to come in and complete the audit at that time. So, so that, so now, as I understand it, confirmed with Donna, that y'all have called up on the bank reconciliations through twenty-four, so they're, I think she said she's done September, I can't remember, about October, I commute it. It's been a couple of weeks, so it's done as well. So, so the bank reconciliations are called up, but as of June thirtieth, twenty-three, they, they were several months behind, so that's the material weakness. So that's the bad news, the good news is that they're called up. The court fines, we found that, the court fines were behind last year in getting paid, and the first couple of months of the fiscal year, they were behind as well. Then y'all called the reporting up and everything like that, but it was, the actual payments to the state didn't get fully called up until actually after June thirtieth of twenty-four. So they called, got called up this fall sometime, as our, late summer or, I think it was the fall of twenty-four. So we'll actually have this compliance finding again when we do the, the June thirtieth, twenty-four audit, just because they didn't get called up until after then. So, but they are all called up now. All of the submissions for the court fines are being done, and the monies owed to the state are being submitted on a timely basis. So, we also audited the ARPA program. The ARPA program looked good, that was fairly routine, y'all basically took five million dollars this year as lost, making up for lost revenue, similar to what y'all had done in the prior year. So, so those were the only two compliance findings we had, everything else looked good. And then on the management letter, which y'all have also got in front of you as well, you'll see that's a fairly routine communications, nothing there that I'd really call your attention to, except to note that we did make a recommendation for improvements in the municipal court procedures, similar to what we had made in the prior year. Just involving basically the clerk of court and some of the checks, making sure that what's getting paid actually was approved by the judge and all that. That's, you know, if you look at municipalities, the clerk of court position is probably one of the ones that you hear of, people have problems with, you know, people embezzling funds or fraud. Fortunately, it doesn't happen that often, but when it, you know, if there is fraud at a municipality, it's not uncommon for it to involve the clerk of court, because a lot of times people are paying in cash and no one checks to see exactly what, you know, what the judgment was. So that's our recommendations, just to check to make sure that what's being collected was what was owed. And then we also had a recommendation regarding IT policies and procedures. Basically there just to make sure that, you know, to try the backups, make sure the backups work. Y'all have got to, y'all outsource it, so y'all have got some procedures and policies in place. Our, our recommendation is just to go a little bit further on that, but overall, I think you're all in pretty good shape there. So I think that's the management letter, that's the compliance. So just see, you'll see on the next slide, we gave you an unmodified opinion, that's the best one you can get, and as far as the financial condition of the city at June thirtieth, twenty-three, I think y'all are in good financial health as of June twenty-three. And that's my presentation, so if y'all have got any questions, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Do y'all have any questions?
When can we expect the June thirtieth, twenty-two-four?
We are planning to come in late January to begin the audit, and I'm anticipating with the bank reconciliation being called up and the court fines being called up, we've already got some information on the leases, that's always a thing to work through on the vehicle leases, so we've already started getting some of that information. I'm thinking we'll get through it fairly quickly, so we should be done with fieldwork by the end of February, so I'm thinking March we should issue the financial statements. So that, that's the game plan, so, and I'm optimistic this year that we'll hit it, so. I know it was a little bit drawn out this past year, so.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much.
All right. Well, as, as I mentioned, if y'all do have questions or any concerns or anything prior us, to us coming in the audit, please let me know. I mean, we work for council, we're mindful of that, that, you know, you're the reason why we're doing the audit, you know, you're, you're who we report to ultimately. So if y'all do have concerns or anything, like, let us know, because as I mentioned, we'll be coming back in January to start the audit of fiscal year twenty-four.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, so next on our agenda items for work session for discussion, we have our second reading of ordinance twenty-two-four dash ten, which is to amend section thirty, twenty-two C of chapter thirty of title III of the easily city code. It's the one where we are changing at recommendation to do a show of hands rather than roll call. Is there any discussion and questions? No? Okay. We also have the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-four eleven, to amend section thirty point oh-eight for compensation and expenses of chapter thirty of title III of the easily city code. And this is for our much discussed compensation correction that we need to do as the city is out of compliance. This will be our fourth time legislating it, so if you guys have questions, and Mr. Robinson had a good suggestion at our retreat that we talked about, any discussion, any questions?
I'm going to be making a motion to, to amend and to strike, strike the change in section one, A, to, to leave that as is. The city council salary change.
What does that mean?
That, that I'm going to make a motion to leave the city council salary as is.
As is?
With the, with the expense account? I'm confused.
No, just, just number two. That the expenses would, would change if we adopted the amendment. The only thing that would not change is city council salary.
Okay.
Mayor Talbert, I'll take the credit or the blame for this proposal. I can't speak for all of my colleagues, but I don't think, pardon you, any of us are in this for the money. And the, it's my opinion that the council pay should be increased with the cost of living increase, along with the pay for the rest of the city employees. That has not happened for many, many years, or what we are paid, we're getting paid less today than we were ten years ago when you factor in inflation, and I think it should keep up with the rest of it. Believe this cannot take effect until after the next election, which would be November of two thousand and twenty-five. P.S., I will not benefit from that.
And your suggestion is to leave it at six hundred?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Hughes, is there any discussion that you have for us as far as a council in trying to make that decision with the ordinance? Would need to be amended if that's what the council wants to do?
I'm not sure, I can just, just make sure we're all on the same page here. I can summarize what, how we got here. So the, the question was raised regarding the expense provision being paid, whether it was documented or not, and it was recommended that that be removed. Subsequent to that, there was additional discussion, understanding of council work session about increasing the salary for council members to be commensurate with what other cities of similar size and budget have in place, and so that was where the recommendations of the seventeen fifty per month for the mayor and a thousand dollars per month for the council came into play. And then you will see that, it's my understanding that in terms of expenses, I had modified the expense language to say, and that's under section B, that expenses actually incurred be reimbursed, and that, that language would be in effect until the end of December thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-five. So if, if council goes to approve that language, the expenses language under section B would go away automatically as of December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five, so what you'd be left with, starting in January one of two thousand and twenty-six, would just be the increase in salaries from six hundred to a thousand for council and from twelve hundred to seventeen fifty for the mayor. Just want to make sure council is aware of, of what the ordinances provides for.
And, and just speaking to, to my proposed amendment, I mean, my proposed amendment would simply, in section one, A, two, just remove the strike through of the six hundred in insertion of the thousand, it would just leave it as a six hundred. So it wouldn't have any effect on the, yeah, it wouldn't have, I mean, this doesn't have anything to do with the reimbursement. I, I completely support the language change in the reimbursement. I think it complies with state law that in, in the proposed ordinance.
And you do understand under the current proposal, though, that that, the expense language would go away at the end of, at two thousand and twenty-five? So there would be no expense reimbursement as of that date if you, if the state, if you made your amendment, it would just be six hundred dollars, and starting in January twenty, in two thousand and twenty-six would be no expense reimbursement?
Okay.
Any further discussion on this? Okay. Next item up will be first reading of ordinance twenty-two-four twelve, to extend the moratorium to temporarily suspend the acceptance of, review of, and/or action upon applications for zoning approvals, development, construction permits, and other action for additional six months. My understanding is Mario MRB is within a few months, they don't anticipate it being six months.
I did not get a firm date, but I anticipate probably two, three months to write it, and then two or three months to get it done, so maybe as much as six months or four months.
Because I know it's got to go before the planning commission and council.
Yes.
And then you'll have to have staff training so that it's familiar, so.
So any discussion or questions or concerns from the extension?
Mayor Talbert, there are exceptions to every rule, but it's my general policy not to vote against an ordinance on first reading. to vote against an ordinance on first reading. That is not an indication of how I might vote later, but that would take care of first reading.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions?
Do you think this is really necessary?
The extension?
Yeah.
Well, the concern I have is finishing what we started, and we knew in the beginning when we talked to MRB that it was going to be longer than six months to do what they, what we wanted done with the combination. And I just add a personal story to it, when I was in labor with my second child, I had been there 12 hours and decided I was done, I wasn't going to finish. I was leaving, I had had enough of him and waiting for him for 12 hours, and I was out. And I was told really quickly that you can't, you gotta, you gotta hang in and you gotta finish what you started, so I feel that way about our moratorium. We've put a lot of work into it, we've put some money into it, we've put the time into it, and I just feel like if we leave any ambiguity in not extending it, then you're going to have problems, I think, on the backside with people coming in and saying, but I applied in this period, and so that doesn't apply to me. I just think it's cleaner, and we finish what we start. That's, that's my personal opinion, that may not be everybody's.
We actually saw some of that, people come in and say, well, I talked to you before, and we said, no, it's cut and dry.
Yeah, we had a couple of folks that talked to the prior administration prior to this and had verba's.
Well, they had started the conversation.
That we were going to do that, yeah.
Doesn't mean they...
And they didn't get far enough to go on with.
You need plans.
Yeah.
And same with this, we have a, if we have a stint, a cut down, a cut date, that we can't do anything else to, makes it a lot cleaner. And I think we can move it up some, but I'm not going to get into that right now until I start seeing the drafts come in.
Mr. Hughes felt like it was safer to just do the six months?
Six months.
And then when we're done, we're done.
So, we won't do another six months, huh?
I don't anticipate.
I don't anticipate that. I'm hoping to get done quicker.
We just had the MRB meeting, just...
The open, the public, yes, he's trying to finish all that outside.
Just, can I ask Tom, what his feeling is on this? Okay, I'm not trying to discount you, but...
Sure, I think when we started it, and it will be confusion if we pass, if we don't extend it in the interim time until all the regulations and ordinances are rewritten, you'll have that, that time of people that come in, you either have to vote them in, annex things in during that, during that dead time, so I think it's probably better to go ahead and extend it. And again, we'll push MRB to finish quicker, as quick as we can, and along with the planning commission and then council, because council, y'all have the last look at all the ordinances, and we'll try to get those out to you as quick as they can.
All right, next item that we'll be going through tonight is our first reading of Ordinance 2024-13, to authorize the lease of certain property located at 201 North First Street in the city of Easley to the Greater Easley Chamber of Commerce. If you guys have read your packets, is there any questions or discussion?
I'm glad to see there's a CPI increase booked in.
Everybody good? No questions? Okay. And then next, we have the first reading of Ordinance 2024-14, to authorize the lease of certain property located at 201 South Fifth Street, Suite 212, in the city of Easley's, a city of Easley II, United Way of Pickens County. And if you read your packet, is there any questions about that or any discussion?
Listen, Preston Hall.
Okay. Project updates is next, do we have any project updates?
I have a building official, Tor Elstrom, give a quick update on some activities he's had in the, in the few months he's been here.
Good evening, everyone. As you're probably all aware, I came in here April 29th, 2024, we had third party in here, and I brought in a couple of guys to work with me that I had known from other jurisdictions, and fortunately, one of those left to go work with his family, and we were fortunate to find a certified inspector from Oconee County that we were able to steal away. Just a note there, he just passed his second certification test last Wednesday, so he's doing real good for us, but he does pretty much the residential, I handle the commercial. Biggest project I got right now would probably have, I'd say, would be the Toyota of Easley new 36-bay garage that they, you know, maintenance garage and all. So, despite the fact that we're in the moratorium that we're in, we've gone up about a, just about a little over 100 inspections from this time, same time period last year, and we've issued 347 permits during the same timeframe, that's for this fiscal year, as opposed to 196 last year. So, we're still clicking along moratorium or not, so if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask them.
I don't know if this is the right time to ask this, but you know, I passed along some addresses of places that needed some severe attention.
Yes.
And you have hung condemnation signs on a couple of them, which is great. Now, my question is, and what the folks that, that are living in that area wants to know is, what kind of teeth do we have as far as going in there and making these people work, make them tear it down maybe, or whatever?
Well, as you know, they have due process, and then we issue summons, we've issued about 16 summons since Anthony came to work with us, and done about 447 code enforcement cases, so that's a big increase from what, what was here before. I kind of wanted to make that a priority, it was communicated to me before I came to work here that they wanted to see that transpire, and that's what we've tried to do. And I think several of you have sent complaints, and we've tried to address them. Having Anthony here is really good, because, you know, I did what he does for about eight years early in my career, and he's got, going on seven years' experience, so between the two of us, we kind of know how to handle that stuff. And then, of course, we'll be seeing the judge here shortly with some of these people that we've brought forth, and with Daniel tonight, we've got 10 of those summons that are going to be in a jury trial, so we're all, I handed him the discovery stuff tonight, and we're expecting the same back from them, so. It, it takes time, it doesn't happen overnight, but it also gets people's attention, and then it gives you more teeth, as you say, when people see that things have consequences.
And I would think that the neighbors around these surrounding areas are very pleased to see that progress is finally being made.
Well, as you and I discussed, we don't hear a lot of feedback positive wise, but that, that would be something y'all would hear.
Yeah, they want it fixed, they don't want their name used.
That's right.
That they turn them in.
That's right.
That they let us...
That's right, and sometimes people throw bricks from glass houses.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I think the point being, and I understand exactly where you're coming from, but it's regardless of where we are, there are ordinances, and people can either comply, or they don't, and now this is a situation where there are consequences for not.
Good, good, good.
And I think this is to the benefit of the city.
Well, thank you for saying that.
Does anybody else have any more questions or comments?
Yes, yes, when we clean the properties, that's, that's a good point, thank you, Daniel. Daniel and I had worked together when I was at the city of Greer, and we came up with a lien form to take to the county, so we can file liens on the properties and whatnot. And we, we've changed that same form that he put together for us there, he was kind enough to share it with me, and we're using it here, and we'll be taking some liens over to the county to file here shortly, for where we've cleaned some properties using Eddie's people and stuff.
Thank you.
Because we don't want to do it for free.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, lastly, we have an executive session, we're going to vote to go into the executive session, if we do go into executive session, everybody except the people that are supposed to be here, I think, Tom, you were going to call out the people that should stay.
Yes, ma'am, of course Jennifer, Mario, and Ralph will stay in, along with our attorneys.
Okay, so we'll vote to go into executive session for the discussion of negotiations incident to proposal, proposed contractual arrangements, and proposed sale or purchase of property, the receipt of legal advice, where the legal advice relates to a pending threatened or potential claim, or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims, or the position of the public agency in other adversary situations involving the assertion against the agency of a claim. Section 3470a2, or discussion of, discussion of matters relating to the proposed location, expansion, or the provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, according to Section 3470a5. Okay, possible action may be taken. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
May. A second.
We did, all in favor? Are we going to roll call? We don't vote in here, do we?
That's a vote, that's a vote to go in.
But I didn't think we voted in here.